I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hotchkiss.
Here.
House.
Mario.
Here.
Rouse.
Here.
White.
Mayor Schneider.
Here.
Mr. House will be here shortly, I just saw him. Okay, we're going to start first with ceremonial item number one.
2013 Architectural Board of Review and Historic Landmarks Commission Design Awards.
Right, Mr. Lamont.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, the Architecture Board of Review and Historic Landmarks Commission and staff are very happy to come forward today so you can help honor our local design professionals and to recognize individuals that deserve recognition for their community service to enhance and preserve the appearance of the city. There are three awards scheduled for today to be presented. The George Washington Smith Award for Architectural Design, the Lockwood de Forest Award for Landscape Architecture, and the St. Barbara Award for Outstanding Community Service. A little brief background on the awards program. The intent of the awards program is to bring public awareness of the rich architectural heritage of the city. It also represents an opportunity for recognition of local design talent. Award winners are selected by reviewing remodel projects and new construction throughout the city. One of the common characteristics of today's award winners on the architectural side is that they have a lot of experience. One has over 35 years of experience and the other close to 27 years. And the projects selected demonstrate that they know how to get it right. Here is an example of a beautiful award that's going to be presented today. It's made out of sateel tile. And we're going to ask the mayor to come down and help us present these awards. The first award is the George Washington Smith Award, and I ask Kirk Reddine, the vice-chair of the ABR, to help present this award.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, it's my great pleasure and privilege to introduce the recipient of the 2013 George Washington Smith Award to a, not so young fellow anymore, but a gentleman that you all know. He's been, as Jaime mentioned, been in the architectural community for many years. And I believe it was Vitruvius said that architecture is the highest of all the arts because it includes and encompasses all of them. And Mark Shields came to architecture through art. Many of you may have known him when he was a fine artist in town, graphic artist. He has contributed in many ways, large and small, to some of the finest projects built in Santa Barbara in the last 20 years. And so I feel like it's particularly deserving that his own house in the Plaza Rubio area near the Mission is being recognized for the very sensitive addition and remodel that he did. In fact, as we were going through the selection process, we commented, one of the selection members commented that it looked as though George Washington Smith himself had designed the house. It's so well-done, so well-proportioned, and so much in the character of the style that is loved by Santa Barbara. So, Mark Shields, come forward, please.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks so much. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Yes, thanks so much, everybody, of the City of Santa Barbara. Turn this way? Okay. Thank you so much, councilmembers, mayor, and the City of Santa Barbara. It's truly an honor to receive this award. And I truly love Santa Barbara, and after growing up here for so many years, I'm a strong proponent of the city. And I'd like to also thank the HLC and the ABR for thinking of me. I'd like to thank Nils Larsson, who was our builder, for all his conscientious time and hard work to build the project. I'd like to thank my wife, Jo, for helping so much in getting involved in designing the landscape of the project as well. And in general, also my brother and my sister-in-law for financing the whole thing. So, thanks so much, and it's a great honor.
Madam Mayor, the second award will be presented by Stephanie Poole, our landscape architect member of the ABR.
Oh. Okay.
The Lockwood de Forest Award is given for excellence in design of landscaping, ornamental structures, and non-habitable structures. This year's award was the easiest one that we had to choose from. The Santa Barbara Historical Museum at 136 East Delagara Street by Martha DeGasis of Arcadia Studio was, hands-down, the best project that we could think of for landscaping in the city. It's almost like it was undesigned. It was complete, when it was complete, it looked like it had always been there. And that's what we love about one of our favorite structures in the city. So, Martha DeGasis, please come forward.
It's a great honor, I really appreciate it. And we just want to say that everything we do at Arcadia is a collaboration, so I'm not certain that I'm entirely deserving as an individual of this, but I certainly appreciate it. And I'm glad that the Historical Museum is getting some exposure because I think it's a beautiful place everybody should visit and enjoy a little bit more maybe than it already is being enjoyed. And also, of course, would acknowledge the really superior job by the, all the construction companies, the landscape construction, the general construction companies, Skipper Construction, the museum, of course, and the environmental consultants and construction company. Thanks so much.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, the last award, the St. Barbara Award, will be presented by Donald Sharp, the vice-chair of the Historic Landmarks Commission.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, two events happened in Santa Barbara in the mid-'20s. First, the earthquake, and second, the birth at Cottage Hospital the year after, 1926, of Killam de Forest. He's an incredible Santa Barbara treasure, constantly working to recognize, preserve, and revitalize our historic resources. He spends countless hours attending Historic Landmarks Commission meetings, never shy about giving his opinion, with comments many of us members wished we had thought about. Beyond his keen intellect and constant vigilance, he's been a catalyst for the preservation and improvement of more projects than I have time to mention. It's with great honor that the ABR and HLC present Killam with the St. Barbara Award.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the city council. I appreciate this honor. I sometimes have thought, my speaking on behalf of Historic Preservation before this body, the Historic Landmarks Commission and the Architectural Review Board, has had little impact. I hope this award for service to enhance and preserve the built environment of Santa Barbara means my preservationist friends and I are making progress. It is only by bringing attention to threats to historic structures and sites that these structures and sites can be saved and continue to be part of the fabric that makes Santa Barbara a unique city. It is commendable that Historic Preservation advocacy is again being recognized by the city. I trust the term "built environment" includes landscape along with architecture. I gather it does since you have just given a separate landscape award named for my father, Lockwood de Forest. Also, thanks to staff and members of the Historic Landmarks Commission and the Architecture Board of Review for this award. Please keep enhancement and preservation of Santa Barbara as an essential part of your review and approval of the projects that come before you. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just in conclusion, I want to thank our local artist, Leslie Cypress, who did the collaborative work on the awards, along with the subcommittee that assisted in the nominations, and Bill Mahan for assistance to fabricate the awards. He's our former St. Barbara Award winner, and he helped out to fabricate the awards. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, and congratulations to you all. Okay, any changes to the agenda?
No, there aren't, Madam Mayor.
Okay, public comment. We have two minutes here at the podium and a number of speakers. So, those of you filing out, if you could do so quietly and then you can speak outside the council chambers, would be great. We'll start with Nancy McCready. You're giving your two minutes to Bob? Okay, Bob Hanson, you're next, and then Kenneth Locke. So, Bob, you have four minutes. Gibson. Okay, good afternoon, Bob. Please proceed, go ahead.
Yeah, I just handed out the latest in the Sentinels hate language. They wrote a story and they called it the Wizard of Oz or Wizard of Ick, and they're pretending that Santa Barbara is the Wizard of Oz, and that we have a yellow brick road, and some students from the university are walking down State Street, and they see transits, drunkards, and thugs. Oh, my. Transits, drunkards, and thugs, oh, my. Transits, drunkards, and thugs, oh, my. The story, to me, is really hateful. I think we need to, you know, today you're going to vote on code of conduct. They need to be put in their place and stop this hate stuff. It's their little silly story. This Thursday, we're having a remembrance of Clifford Bean, a candlelight remembrance. He was from Glita in Santa Barbara. He was a volunteer and number-one recycler. It's going to be February 14th at 5:00 at the Morton Bay Fig Tree by the train station. And I believe most of us know that tonight President Obama is going to speak the State of the Union. When I think of the State of the Union, I think, what about all these cities all across our nation that have this issue of homelessness? And how do we deal with it? We wage war against it. We have restorative policing. I know Mr. White sat there and said not too long ago, yeah, we helped two people leave, but four come. And that's the situation. Now, if all the cities band together and try to get an executive order, which Mr. Obama has been talking about a lot of other issues, on the homeless, let's say a homeless person could pay $200 a month or work 20 hours a month and have some place to call home. Officer Hove talked about that in the county. He's out there and said, that's what people need, a place to call home. And in the county, we're going to help a few people. Let's say there's 600 homeless people, we're going to help, maybe try to help 100. Now we have 500. So, you know, we need to get, you know, on board together. I know you guys all share information with other cities of how to get rid of the homeless. And this is one way that we could say, you know what, we're never going to get rid of them, but we could do some real positive things if we could sit there and try to come up with innovative ideas, a place to call home, and a person could pay $200 a month, he could work 20 hours a month, to help pay for this place to call home. We have been collecting petitions, asking governors and mayors, like yourself, Helene, to get an executive order, and here's the petitions right here. There's 300 signatures of asking mayors and governors to declare an executive order because governors and mayors and presidents can do that. And it's not going to be the end of homelessness, but I think this is what we really want. We're going to try to get a handle on homelessness. And the restorative policing, sending some people out, and two people out, and four come back, or whatever, and I can see it out there. We can all see it. As we drove over here, Nancy and I, it's like, look, they're everywhere. And you know what? They're not going to hurt anybody in general, but still, it's whatever it is. And so tonight, you know, Mr. Obama's going to talk about the State of the Union. And I think, you know, homeless is probably one of the top issues in this country. And they are American citizens, most of them. They're homeless, they're on our streets, they live there, they die there. The count was taken. It's going to help some people, but probably a smaller amount. And we're never going to get rid of homeless, and I have 20 seconds left. And, you know, my ideas aren't great, but still, I think we need to sit there and really go to the top, which is the president, and he can do something, just like he did with the students just recently. They went and got week work visas. We can do something in that general aspect, instead of waging war as we always do against the homeless. Thank you.
Kenneth Locke will be followed by Robert Johnson. The final speaker will be Patricia Bartoli-Wibel.
My name is Kenneth Locke. On my tennis dance webpage, I'm working, I worked on a couple of pages. One, I Googled the word shame, and in Google, I found that there was somebody from another country that had a shame campaign against drug people, whatever, and painted, put paint on their homes. I think it might have backfired on the guy, but I'm going to do a kind of a shame. I got nothing done, this is, my tennis dance project's not a money-making operation for me, so I'm free to do whatever I want to do. And I think it's really important that we recognize the nature of what shame is. And right now, if you don't know what shame is, or who is shameful, most likely you're as shameful as them, whatever type of situation. I make an example of Roger Federer. He is actually mentally and physically retarded, from my perspective, and a lot of people don't understand that based on the fact that they are mentally and physically retarded. And that's the whole basis of shame. If you don't understand how Roger Federer is shameful, how he is not providing anything to the human race, whatever, and actually, the relationship is actually degenerative, and it's actually degenerating the youth, but he's probably not aware of that, and you're not probably aware of that. I just started a page, the ideal of tennis. Now, what I represent for tennis is the ideal. My relationship with tennis, as I've mentioned, is ambidextrous, it's holistically healthy. My mind and my body are integrated, I have a true spiritual relationship, and my teaching is the basis of my soul, the service that I provide. But when it comes to Roger Federer, no, he's the false idol. And right now, like this community, I'm sorry to inform it, but it's worshiping false idols. Thank you.
Robert Johnson.
Yes, I am Dr. Robert L. Johnson, PhD, clinical psychologist. And I was perusing the internet just a few minutes before I came here, and I came across this information from Margination Press, children's books. And as you know, the Program for at-Risk Youth deals with children aged 12 to 18, and also children. So, and I saw these books, Wishing Wellness, this is the book, a workbook for children of parents with mental illness. And this is a workbook that is designed to allow children to process their thoughts, feelings, experiences, while learning about their parents' mental illnesses. So, there's another good book on there, and these are books I'd like to have at our center. I'd like to have it, so that children, adolescents can. Here's another book, Why Are You So Scared? And this is a book for children to learn about their parents who have PTSD. And there's another book, a good book, Why Are You So Sad? The children's book about parental depression. And when children are depressed, oftentimes, parents are also depressed, goes hand in hand. So, they each learn from each other through these workbooks. And basically, that's what the children and the parents can learn from each other. And that's why our Program for at-Risk Youth exists. And that's what we're all about. Thank you very much, board members.
Patricia Bartoli-Wibel.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, city council, city staff. I have good news for you. We're going to be doing a lot of work in the area. We've got our Santa Barbara reliability project, which is our 66 KV transmission line. We submitted our permit to construct at the CPUC, and we'll be working closely with them through their environmental review and hope to start that project by 2016. It's an existing project, but the reliability aspect of it is re-conducting for safe, reliable power throughout the Santa Barbara County to the south-coast region. So, it's very important to us that we support the Santa Barbara area with this new project. It's not new, it's an old project, but new to the CPUC and our permit to construct. We'll be doing a lot of deteriorated pole work also in the area, which will incur, you know, outages and traffic control, but we want to make sure that we're, you know, supporting the infrastructure, as I mentioned. I'll be in touch with your planning department and your roads to make sure that they have the proper permitting and notification for outages. We'll be testing some underground cable, so, again, for reliability, and we'll replace as needed for the infrastructure reliability, safe power. We will be, you know, continuing our campaigns with demand response, energy efficiency, so it'll help to balance the, you know, load aspects. But, you know, our Senate O'Frey project is very important to us as well. We need generation to balance the grid. We have a lot of renewables online, but you know, solar and wind kind of go like this, and then the demand goes like this. And so consistent power to keep the grid stable is very important to us. So, we're going to be having a host of hearings with the CPUC and the Nuclear Regulatory Commission. So, those will be ongoing, and I'll keep you up to date. I've sent you emails, but I'll be glad to meet with you if you have any questions. And lastly, our grant window's open for Southern California Edison. Last year, we gave, it was, let's see, $19 million in grants from our company, so we're encouraging all the nonprofits to check out our website and get involved. So, I appreciate it, and thank you for your support.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. We'll move on to the consent calendar, there's an item to read there.
Yes, item number three, adoption of an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara granting exclusive 10-year franchise for citywide solid waste collection and disposal services to Marburg Industries, Incorporated. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara granting an exclusive 10-year franchise for citywide solid waste collection and disposal services to Marburg Industries, Incorporated, a California corporation, and approving and authorizing the city administrator to execute a memorandum of understanding between the city and Marburg Industries, Incorporated, providing for Marburg's waiver of certain compensation under the existing Zone 1 and Zone 2 franchise agreements in consideration of the grant of the new citywide franchise to Marburg.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. There was a request for item three and item four to be taken off. Item three, Ms. Mario.
I need to vote no.
Okay, so we'd like to vote on that separately.
Yes, please.
Is there a motion for item three?
So moved.
Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. And then, item number four, if you could read the title to that.
Approval Extension for the South Coast Energy Efficiency Partnership Agreement.
Okay, Ms. Wibel, if you'd like to come on up.
I just want to say that Santa Barbara is a key partner for Southern California Edison, and we consider them a star in our corporation. They're known throughout as being very proactive, initiating change, and working for the community, you know, with their Earth Days and, you know, the different events. They support a lot of our programs in Southern California Edison, so I am definitely here to champion the renewal of the membership for Escape, and we really appreciate that partnership.
Thank you for your partnership. Okay, is there a motion for the balance of the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes, thank you. Move on to report from the Finance Committee, Mr. Francisco.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the Finance Committee heard a couple of items today. First, and we recommended to the full council that a loan subordination approved for an affordable housing project, Habitat for Humanity, that that be approved, pretty standard sort of thing. The other thing is, we heard the mid-fiscal year report on the first six months of fiscal 13, as well as proposed mid-year adjustments to the budget. And it is my recommendation, having heard this in great detail and asked a lot of questions to make sure that we, on the Finance Committee, understood this quite well, I think all of those mid-year adjustments proposed were quite routine, and in the interest of saving the Finance Director's sanity, we might want to consider a summary report, and of course, if there are council members who have particular questions.
Okay. And it'll be, and certainly, we've read it, and it's on, it's taped, too, so the public can see the details as well. Okay, item number eight.
Report from Santa Barbara Metropolitan Transit District.
Okay, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Browning Allen, the Transportation Manager in the Public Works Department. This item is a report from MTD on their services within the city limits of the, well, the south coast. And the reason we're bringing this before council, as the council might know, we've had an ongoing contractual relationship with MTD for close to 20 years now. It's where we provide financial support for some of their services. Additionally, we, through the Measure A renewal of the program, they're getting directly some of the Measure A money that we used to receive for transit that's going directly to them. So, it's a good time for MTD to kind of share what's going on with their current system and what's happening in the future. So, Sherry Fisher, the general manager of MTD, is here to make this presentation.
Wherever you're most comfortable.
I'd like to sit down.
Sure.
There we go. Good afternoon, Mayor Schneider, members of the council, and thanks for giving us a little bit of time. I promise you, it'll be short unless you have a lot of questions, and at the end, I'll show you a really short movie, so it'll be your entertainment for the day. So, MTD has 7.9 million passenger trips a year. Hard to believe in a community that's under 200,000, going from the Ventura County line to Winchester Canyon. So, we have a high ridership, and that's the good news. 7.9 million passenger trips, 2.6 million service hours, and, I'm sorry, 203,000 service hours, and 2.6 million service miles. 39 passengers on a per-revenue-hour basis. That means one bus traveling one hour. In some cases, I'm going to show you some of those buses carry an awful lot of passengers, others not so many, but averaging out 39 per hour. And here's, that was my good news weather. The bad news weather is that in the occasion, 13,000 times in the past fiscal year, there were times when we could not pick up the next passenger. So, we picked up councilmember Hotchkiss, Ben D. White, and Randy Rouse, but when Mayor Schneider was waiting for the bus, we had to say no. 13,000 times is a lot. I'm here to report that that's the bad news. I want to tell you about what it is that we intend to try to do about that. So, here are the service Thirteen thousand times is a lot. I'm here to report that that's the bad news. I want to tell you about what it is that we intend to try to do about that. So here are the service per hour, per line. And as you can see, the line 22 has the smallest amount of passengers per hour. We intend to give that line at least another six months to increase its ridership, because we know that Ellen Canto is opening up in the middle of March. So we've held off on our decision about that and hope that that will make some difference. You'll see that the line 16 at the bottom of that list has 100 passengers per hour, which sounds amazing, how would you get 100 passengers on one bus? But that's because it's a short trip, going up to City College from the TC, coming back, and then going up again. So it's a very high ridership. We're going to talk a minute about UCSB and City College, both of which are campuses that are extremely green and have a lot of riders per, a lot of rides per student. If you, I'm sorry, Steve, can you go back? Sorry, Browning, can you go back just a second? If you want to take a quick look at the line 37, which is, I'm sorry, the line, I made it hard for you to find these, they're not in order. The Crosstown Shuttle is what I'm looking for there, thank you very much, which has approximately 23 passengers per hour. It's a service that we did reduce last year when the RDA funds no longer were able to come into MTD for that service. We did find a convenient way to do it in terms of the customers, because we were able to take service away from midday. Always difficult to take anything away, but we did find that we still have a good number of customers per hour. And you'll also see that the service on the Downtown Waterfront Shuttle has been reduced a little bit in this past year, largely, we believe, due to the fact that we raised, we collectively raised the fare from the 25 cents to 50 cents, and it's taking a bit of time to get used to that. Go ahead. Want to remind you that a lot of our service runs parallel to the 101, so that we travel all the way from Isla Vista and Galita, and on into Santa Barbara, of course, Carpinteria, paralleling the 101 on our, what we call our trunk lines. And on those trunk lines, in the Galita to Santa Barbara area, there's 100, 1,783,000 trips taken per year. And on the other end of heading south from here, 481,000 passenger trips per year on the 20 and 21. So that nearly 30% of what we provide to the entire community is on those trunk lines. A map of your services coming into the downtown Santa Barbara area, I'm sure you're familiar enough to know that there's a lot of service out there, and I know you don't want me to bore you by explaining every piece of that. But significant service and significant use, both from the west and east side across town, up to the Mesa, a lot of service, and then, again, headed out of town in both directions. So, 7.9 million passenger trips, I'm going to get that one in our, I always want to say 8 million, but we're not quite there, we're really close. 6.9 million ridership on those routes that serve Santa Barbara directly. And we've listed them there for you, including the Downtown Waterfront Shuttle, the Crosstown Lines 1, 2, 5, 6, 7, 8, 11, 12X, which is an express to Galita, 14 to Montecito, 15X, which is an express from Isla Vista to City College and back, and we'll talk about that one more in a minute, 16, 17, 20, and 21 going to Carpinteria, 22 to the Old Mission Area, and the 24, which is an express to UCSB. Out of all those lines that serve City of Santa Barbara directly, 11,398 times when we had to refuse the next customer. So, there's two campuses that we're very familiar with, because we have a great, a great program with them. Does not include their staff members, but for the students of both UCSB and City College, they prepay a fee to MTD, and by doing that, they then can use their Reg Card during that semester or quarter to ride the bus on that prepaid fare. You're going to see that they're a very green group, 885,600 passenger trips just from UCSB students alone. And primarily on the lines that directly serve campus, as you would expect, but again, 5,438 times when the bus was too full to load on these particular lines. This isn't duplicative when I keep talking about those numbers, it's 13,000 total, but I'm showing you where they happened. And you can see over there on the box that State and Hollister is a good part of the service for the Isla Vista UCSB crowd, but a lot more of it coming from the UCSB area and the service that directly goes to campus, like the 24 Express, and then, and then other lines, because a student can, City College or UCSB can ride any line they like any day of the week. It's not focused on just getting to and from campus, it's focused on keeping cars off the road. And we believe that we keep about 26,000 cars off the road every day. So City College, 1.2 million passenger trips for students going to City College or using their City College pass, and 52% of those riders use the lines that directly serve campus, again, as you would expect, but a group of them's riding on the other lines, and 3,200 times when we were unable to accommodate those passengers. City College students have moved, a lot of them, to Isla Vista. It is a, perhaps a less expensive place to live, and seen as a great opportunity, because we do have this super express bus that goes directly from Santa Catalina, which we all used to know as FT, and goes directly to City College and returns in the afternoon, returns back and forth all day long. That has become such a very popular route, that although you look in our bus book and you'll see one trip at 7:30, one trip at 8:30, there really are four buses going at 7:30, and three buses going at 8:30. And even at that, we're not totally accommodating everybody. We would like to, but it's a matter of how much service we can provide, how many, how much money we have to provide, and where we would have to balance our budget by taking perhaps away from somebody else. Therefore, we're in a conversation with City College and will be in a conversation with UCSB about the fees, the potential of raising those fees to accommodate the fact that we need to provide them with more service, and to accommodate the fact that there are so many rides being taken, that I never want anybody to think I don't like that, that's amazing, it's totally amazing. But there's not enough money coming back in to support it. One other piece of good news, the Federal Transit Administration, which is our federal funding agency, I like to think of it as ours locally in the whole community, this is a big part of what funds transit. The agency recognizes urbanized areas, in particular, our urbanized area size, that's between 50,000 and 100,000, now I want to say employees, residents. And in those areas that are that, they look at six different criteria on how they measure transit. I want you to know that in those criteria, MTD comes in second in the state of California. And I'm always expecting everybody to say, what's first? It happened to be Davis that's first. In the whole country, we come in 12th, out of 319 small cities nationwide. So we're recognized by the Federal Transit Administration. That does bring in some additional funding that's focused on local transit, and one of the ways that we can all collectively think in terms of helping to solve the problem of how many overloads we have, is that when funding comes into the community focused on transit, that's where we should be trying to keep it, is local transit. My personal opinion. And don't quite go to the articulated bus yet, because I want to tell you a little bit about, so what's one of the other solutions we have? And that is that we are going to move into a, we did a trial run last year, and you probably all remember that that articulated bus was in town, and everybody was worried that that bus was too big. As it turns out, the bus accommodated about a bus and a half full of passengers, it's 60 feet long instead of 40 feet long. We didn't really have any problems with streets and turns, and we had a very successful use of it for campus. So we planned to buy three of them to accommodate City College, and that will certainly help us with our operating costs for those services. It's not going to solve the whole problem in and of itself, but it's certainly a good move in that direction. We also know that the SB CAG is preparing the RTP at this time period, that it will set transportation funding priorities for the next many years. So we're looking toward working together with them on that RTP. In the same timeframe, as part of the RTP, SB 375 requires a sustainable communities' strategy to meet the community's greenhouse gas, not grass, greenhouse gas emissions goal. And SB CAG has adopted a scenario in the process of this that includes an enhanced transit strategy that's currently under development. So we'll certainly be working closely with them to remind them of the local transit needs. And MTD intends fully to work cooperatively with everybody on this. I want to give you your gift now of a short movie that shows you what it was like traveling from Isla Vista into downtown, or no, excuse me, not into or even through, but up to the Mesa for the community college, and show you how many passengers can fit on one bus. So if you'd go ahead with the articulated bus.
What's the number here? I got lost count.
Yeah, I was just going to ask who got that. It was 99 passengers, and one vehicle. So we're pleased to say that it was very successful. We appreciate that everybody held their breath while you, we know you collectively worried, as we did, that it might not work out well in Santa Barbara, but it did. And we certainly don't intend to start running articulated buses up and down State Street, but it's a solution for something that's a freeway service and that has the need for the larger capacity. Some, I didn't say to you, but behind me in the background here, Dave Davis, our Chair of our Board, I'm sure you had a chance to say hi to Dave, and know that Dave is one who particularly recognizes that it's Marty Graff at Tuesday Today, and Jerry Estrada, the Assistant General Manager, and Steve Moss. So if you have any questions, any of us are available.
Thank you. And I don't see any speaker slots for this. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, well, Ms. Fisher, we've identified one of the big impacts in town, which is the student transit back and forth from City College. What, and you mentioned a tremendous number, I forget what it was, but it was a lot of bodies. What is average fare box recovery with that as opposed to the normal transit public? Or do you calculate it that way, or how does that?
We do. We know that if you would like to ride the bus tomorrow, you could pay $1.75 cash, you could pay 10 rides for $11.50, obviously $1.15, or you could ride on a 30-day pass for $52. The return to MTD for students who are community college students, and let me tell you off the top, I remind myself, that City College students are paying $60 annually if they're there all three quarters, or excuse me, all three semesters in their case. The return per ride is 76 cents, so it's significantly less. And that's not because they're doing anything wrong, it's because they're doing things so right. They're riding transit so much that the return that we're receiving off their pay, you know, pay once and prepay for those rides, the return is, has not been enough recently. And that's a success story, but it also means that we need to start talking to them more.
And out of your profile of riders, how many other kinds of programs are there that are subsidized and not full fare? You have senior programs, you have different discounts.
Yeah, thanks for that, I'm, both UCSB and City College, and UCSB's return per ride is something, I'm going to, that Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, is something in the 80 cent range, I believe. No, it's, it's a...
I think it's over a dollar.
Yeah, it's over a dollar. The other, of course, is that for seniors or disabled, we charge less, and we're required by law during off-peak to charge half price for seniors, but we, we charge all day long basically half price. So it's an 85 cent fare for a senior, and a $20 ride for 30-day pass, and so on. We don't, we do have a program with Brooks Institute and with the City of Santa Barbara that's on a pay-per-go, so that we just collect how many people have ridden, and later on, they pay us back. Brooks has got a fairly successful program going, a lot smaller, of course, but then, we get the amount per ride that we've contracted for.
And then, just for the entire system, then what is the percentage of fare box recovery as opposed to operations?
About 38%. We have a goal of 40%, but we're not quite there. We have been many times, but this year, we're not as close as we'd quite like to be. So of course, we will at some point be talking about fare increases, but nothing that we're ready to talk about today.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Fisher, the number that you quoted for number of occurrences of not, of having to refuse passengers, 13,000 something, what is the, what is the total number of occurrences of which that is a fraction?
Oh, that's a good question, and I did collect that information and didn't bring it along. And otherwise, how many trips do we totally have for the year?
Well, how many stops, I assume, is what that is.
Right. Yeah, it's actually a per-trip, so that if the driver sees that once during his trip he was unable, he'll, he'll tag the fare box. What I, you're leading me to though is another thing I didn't point out, which is that when our driver tracks that there's 13,000 trips we couldn't pick up somebody, he's not really counting how many. There might have been one person standing at the corner, or five or 10. So it's, it's a multiplier. We, we don't track it that way exactly. And I'm sorry to say I didn't bring along the number of trips, but I can provide that to you.
Okay, yeah, it'd be interesting, because I think, I mean, maybe in an ideal world where there was as much money as anybody wanted, zero would be a good number for that.
Would be good.
But if you got to zero, that would mean that there would be a lot of trips that, that were pretty underutilized.
Right, right.
So, in the real world, that, that number is going to be greater than zero, but it would be interesting to know what the total.
Yes, and I'm sorry that I don't have that. It is a significant percentage, but, I mean, in the real, in the perfect world, we would know who was going, how many people are going to stand at the bus stop this morning, and we'd go out and pick up those number of people with the right number of buses. But it is public transit, and of course, it's first come, first served, so we can't promise. We can, we can tell you in addition, though, that on a lot of our service these days, we do have 10-minute headways on the 6 and 11, the trunk lines, and on the East and West, and six, either 10-minute headways are sometimes a day 15 minutes, so that it's not a huge long ride, excuse me, a wait. But nevertheless, I recognize that any rejection at the street corner and wait is difficult. I'm aware of that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to return to Mr. Rouse's question. I didn't under, perhaps I didn't understand what you said, or maybe you answered it in a little different way. So you, you talked about those two chunks of rides to, from UCS, Santa Barbara to UCSB, is that right? And then 7:30 and 8:30, and that's your, your big surge?
It's the ones I'm mostly aware of, yes.
And I'm curious about what the, what the recovery is on those, if you're, you're saying you don't, that even then, those aren't enough buses to deliver the, the full complement of people that want to go at that time?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
So I'm curious about how that would, what's the financial aspect, what's, what's the financial result of those, of those runs? And maybe you answered, Mr. Rouse, but I, I thought that was what you were asking, was fare box recovery of those, and I'm curious if you could talk about that a little bit more.
And I probably didn't answer Councilmember Rouse exactly either, in terms of fare box recovery on those. We, we do have some buses that are so full, that yes, we're, we're much closer to recovering for those buses, but we're not getting a payment per ride, we've got to prepay from the students. So, and, and keeping in mind that all students prepay, even though some students never ride, and that other students ride all the time. So in, in that way, it serves like a tax to the students. I don't have in the, in the top of my head what the fare box recovery is on those buses, but if we go back to that slide, Browning, I can show you how many passengers per hour on the 15. Thanks. Oops, no, it's the other, the other, next one over. There you go. Nope, the one with the stripes, the bar charts, right. So the line 15 is way down toward the bottom, and, yeah, 15X, and just go all the way over to the right, and we've got 50 passengers per hour riding those buses. And that's an average throughout the day, so that there's some parts of the day that are not as many. But if I've sent out, if we've sent out four buses, then of course, that's going to be, times 50 passengers per bus, assumedly, although more in those times of day, that's going to be more in the range of 300 passengers for that time period. I can't tell you the, on the top of my head, exactly what that return is, but again, because we're allowing the students to ride anytime, anyplace.
I see, well, that certainly is another variable that would be impossible to track. And then the articulated buses would be focused on those, on that service, because it's freeway-oriented and, and also large volume oriented.
Right.
And your expectation would be to come closer to picking up, or perhaps then, that we'd be so popular, that the hope would be that then, yet another chunk of folks would, would show up to, to take those buses. But your volume would be able to increase by another...
By about a third. If the bus is 60 feet long rather than 40 feet long, and so you can, it accommodated 99 passengers. We had, had one trip with it that was over 100 passengers. On the other hand... On the other hand, I also want to say, I recognize that standing on a bus, jammed together, going down the freeway is uncomfortable, so that if the articulated bus also accommodates more people with more comfort and feeling better about their ride, that's good too. And yes, I do expect that it's somewhat a situation of the more we offer, the more people that will take that accommodation from Ila Vista, and that's a great thing. But for us to be able to offer more, we need to have the funds to do that. Certainly, you know, that's not a request to your council today, that is a request that we're making to City College.
Great. And then finally, Madam Mayor, do you see massaging, you were talking about a low-volume line and the possible opening of the Ellen Canto would, would conceivably could change that. Is that, if that, you're looking then at changing the mix of lines, I'm sure you're doing this all the time, but is that what's in the offing for MTD now, is to, is to change the, the emphasis of, of lines or change the, the schedules to accommodate perhaps the, the UCSB-City College run?
I'm going to answer, but I also want to let Dave Davis know that if he wants to step up and help with this, he's welcome. It's always a balancing act, and so the question is, should we be accommodating 14 passengers per hour on a route that really, those 14 passengers obviously need the service, or are we needing to balance that by taking away some service and accommodating the many, many passengers that have been left behind? So it's not a perfect world, and certainly would be very willing to hear not only input from your August group, but, or your February group even, but from the community at large, because it's really difficult to make those decisions. We're either taking away something somebody really needs, or we're leaving somebody standing. And yes, perfect world would be that we'd know exactly and have exactly the right funds. It's, you know, it's not the way it's going to be.
Mr. House?
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. And really astounding the numbers of people who are, number of trips, number of riders as well, and the, and the, and to see the bu, the map, the bus map here, which is just so beautiful, I mean, how many places it gets to. Just a few things, just on my little list here. Coastal Express, is that what it's called? MTD's running that.
Yeah.
And I know that that's, has the better quality buses, at least better than the Vista ones that are out there right now. Ridership was pretty low, you adjusted fares, and things are starting to improve. How's that going?
Yes, and I should have said originally that we didn't put it on our list of trips here to show you how many passengers per hour. At the moment, it's somewhere in the range of 22, 23 passengers per trip. There's just one trip, the four buses, one trip each coming into Santa Barbara from Ventura and going home in the evening. It's certainly doing better than it started, which is an expectation of any new service, but also the cost of the fare was reduced in July of last year, so that's, that's helped the service. It accommodates people on the freeway, of course, coming in from Ventura, and it's in cooperation with SBAG, and in coordination to some extent with the Vista service coming out of Ventura County itself.
Okay, very good. And then the, I've noticed the, what had been a prototypical type bus shelter in front of Trader Joe's, and then it's, that similar style has been adapted and adopted elsewhere. And how's it going with the bus shelters at the different, at least the main bus stops?
It's going well, and I should thank the council and the city staff, because we have been the recipient of CDBG grant dollars to provide many of those shelters, and other shelters have been the process of the Planning Commission's decision as things have been authorized, that, and if we're close by, that we get a bus shelter to help accommodate the passengers. So there's been, you know, some, some coming out of our pockets, some coming out of CDBG, some coming from a developer. There's been a lot of more, what you might want to call, street furniture out there to make a more comfortable wait for the passenger, and they're looking good.
Notice that there's sort of consistent design throughout the entire system.
Which has been authorized through your Planning Commission.
Very good. A little legacy for Mr. Damiano and company too.
Yes.
Next bus technology that was on the horizon some time ago, is that still in the mix?
Still is, still. We're hoping within, I know we could say one year, but it's, it's going to be at least a couple of years, I'm sure, before. And that'll include AVL, so that you could actually pick up your cell phone and figure out where the next bus was coming from, or coming from, yes, but coming to your stop.
There's a couple more things here. One, on the articulated buses, there seems to be a little reticence to, to get them, you know, other places where they might really be beneficial, but it seems to me that there's some sort of a cars-off-the-road quotient to this. I mean, the fact is, 99 or however many fit in one of those things with one driver, I guess that's the economy of scale, right?
Yes.
And just to share back with you, I had the privilege in 2002, it's been a while now, of going down to Curitiba in Brazil and seeing the bi-articulated buses they use on main lines like along what would be our State Street corridor. And without them, they would be so congested, it would be just incredible. They, you know, if there were to be an interruption in bus service, it would be just devastating. In this case here, I'm one council member who would be eager to see the, the more cars off the road, I guess is the way I would look at it. And then there's this interesting equation between frequency and ridership, and we had the experiment, and it worked, of reducing the headways on a couple of these main routes. And then now we, you've gone back on that to some degree. How's the ridership holding up in those lines?
Fortunately, the ridership is doing well. The reduction, for example, on the Crosstown, although we took out some service midday, the riders per hour stayed up, but of course, the riders for the entire year were down a bit. For example, before the change on the Crosstown, we had, let me take a look here, 139,000 passengers in that year, and now in a half a year or year-to-date through December, we've had 49,000 passengers. So, you know, it's, it's been a reduction of about, you know, it was 24 passengers per hour still, but it's still been a reduction significant of about 40,000 passengers over the year.
One can guess they're getting from here to there some way, and if it's not by bus, you would...
And perhaps, yeah, perhaps getting back into a car, unfortunately, perhaps taking other service. We certainly are believers in the fact that the likelihood that if you go out to the bus stop and you don't really have to study too much or wait half an hour, but you know there's a bus coming in 10 minutes, you're much more likely to become a rider, and particularly if you have the choice.
Okay, well, last question that's in that line, and that has to do with the regional transportation plan, which then later gets followed up with the, our TIP, the Implementation Plan. So at this stage in the game, I would imagine you'd want to have allies in your proposals, and are there any key elements that you want to share with us now that are important to be revised or strengthened in the RTIP that's coming up?
I appreciate that opportunity. We will be reviewing this with our own, with MTD's board soon, probably in our next meeting, to determine what recommendations we have coming back to the larger group, but I don't have anything prepared today to suggest, although the idea of taking care of local transit is, is the focus.
Well, I would encourage you to be in communication with the mayor, who's representative, and me as the alternate to SBAG, because we, it's, we have a good partnership, we want to keep it going. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of quick questions. We said we're underwriting to the tune of, I think, 38% is the way you put it for recovery, and what, you'd like to shoot for 40%, correct?
Yes, it's not a business model that you should follow in most cases. However, for transit, a 40% return in a community our size is important. I talked a little bit about the stick that the federal transit administration looks at, and we're, we're being successful even though clearly we're not coming close to recovering costs.
Right, but that, I was going to, going to ask you that, if that recognition from the feds indicated that we're doing pretty well
Yes.
in this particular category. Always room for more, but obviously...
On a per capita basis, we have, we provide service and ha, and have the use of service that's similar to a community of a million or more, but I'm talking on a per capita basis, of course.
Is our ridership up this year from last?
It is up.
By what, do you know?
Um, sorry, I'm going to work for...
It's 7.9 was the figure.
Mind me. Oh, that's right, the 1.2. Oh, yeah, 1.2 down, I'm sorry.
1.2 million down? Okay. Do we know why?
Yeah, we had some cuts in service, just about 2% cut in service. Our, the reason I think of it the other way is our riders per passenger, passengers per hour is still up a little bit, but our total ridership is down.
Okay. At what point are you going to make a decision about that route on the old mission there?
9/22. We'll be reviewing it in April, along with all of our service, and you're right when you all said that, well, we probably look at service all ti, all times, all year, but particularly in April, we review what's been happening this last year and make recommendations to the board for changes for the next August. We don't change in August just because we want to change, but if something needs to be changed, and that's one of the questions that'll come up.
Because it may take a little bit of time for the Ellen Canto opening to establish true ridership there.
Yeah, exactly.
Final thing, do we look at how internationally people solve their bus transportation problems? I think American transportation is a great deal different than European, but still, they may have systems that we can adapt to here.
We do, not heavily. I haven't been to Caratiba, which I'd love to do, Coritiba, but we do know, for example, that students who come here to study English, particularly at the various schools that are in the community, are heavy transit users, and it's something that they've just grown up with. So there's, there's a different feeling, a different communication about transit, and no, we haven't been over to study much, although of course, we keep connected with our transit operators across the nation and keep up on what's available.
Well, you've got a challenging job, because Americans love their cars, and...
Yes, they do.
So you have to lure them out rather than force them out. Thank you very much.
And obviously, we've lured a lot of them.
Say again?
We've lured a lot of them.
Yes, congratulations.
I want to go back to the Ellen Canto. I don't know if you had a chance to speak with the General Manager, Lauren MacIver, there about bus passes for the employees and to start talking now, because they're, if you're going to review in April, that's only one month after their opening. And I know that's been talked about in the past before, but I don't know if that's been, if there's any option there.
Yeah, I feel like I've put a lot on their shoulder. But yes, they do have a requirement from the Planning Commission to provide bus passes for their employees and to provide bus passes to their guests. So, and they do have some very strict parking rules that, that, I can't tell you where they, what came from them and what came from the Planning Commission, but I can tell you that parking's going to be difficult unless you're a guest. So if you're an employee, you'll be encouraged to ride the bus.
Right, so that goes back to if there's no bus to ride, how does one ride the bus?
Which is...
And if there's a condition of approval with the project, I guess we need, I don't know what the process would be for how we're involved in that decision-making, or how Ellen Canto is involved with that decision-making. So this sounds like a conversation we may need to have at some point.
It's circular, isn't it? And of course, it is why we made the accommodation to wait, and we could certainly have found very successful places to put those hours and miles, but we felt that it was appropriate to wait at this point, because we're that close to the Ellen Canto opening.
Okay. The downtown waterfront shuttle, what was the ridership, what was the ridership last year?
Last year, hmm, I know that we're down, oh, I'm sorry, it was 541,000.
I mean, but if you compare to the riders per service hour?
Riders per service hour are 33 per hour at this point, and, no, and that's what it, well, that's what they were in the last fiscal year. It is down 19% from the fiscal year before that.
Okay, because part of the reason why we increased the fare from a quarter to 50 cents was to cover a budget gap.
Yes.
There were a number of different things, but that was part of it, and maybe, I don't know if that's part of our mid-year review, but, budget review, but are we meeting that goal, or is that something that we have to be concerned about into the next fiscal year?
We started a conversation this morning, so...
In fact, we met about that this morning. We are not currently meeting the goal to reach, bridge the budget gap. We're looking, currently it looks like we're going to be roughly 40, 42,000 short for the current fiscal year, but we're going to continue to evaluate, and hopefully ridership picks up for the balance of this fiscal year, and then we'll, we'll make a decision come the third, or the, going into the fourth quarter on how we're going to handle it.
During the budget cycle, you mean?
Right.
Okay. Right, because that was the point, that's why we did it. We didn't do it just because we wanted to raise the fare, there was a budgetary rationale behind meeting a, it was 300,000, I think, the total.
Correct.
And this was a portion of meeting that goal.
That's correct.
Right. And then I'm curious if you've been able to talk to Assemblymember Williams, who's Chair of the Higher Ed Committee? And I bring that up because there's always a lot of talk about fees for students, not just for tuition, but you just add on, add on, add on, and if you need to go back to City College or UCSB and ask the students whether they want to tax themselves again, because they have to do a vote, it doesn't just happen, they have to vote for it. And if they're being, if they're, if their fees are going up through the state with tuition, I don't know how successful you may or may not be, especially since it's the entire student body that votes on it whether you ride the bus or not. So I'm just wondering if they're, in terms of the higher education budgets through the state, do they, are, is there budgets for transportation for students, or is it just about tuition, or is that something that's worth approaching? He is the Chair, so why not talk to him, right? He knows about MTD very well.
It's not only worth approaching, but it's probably fair to him to approach him as to what's needing to go on within his own community or his home base.
Right.
So we'll certainly do that. We know that UCS, excuse me, that SBCC's staff and administration is concerned about not only the high fees that have happened apart from MTD, but what would the result be of MTD needing to raise fees? On the other hand, we've got to balance that with the rest of the community. So, you know, again, a lot of things are circular.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate the report, it's, it's been a while since we've had an update, so, and I know we had this at the South Coast Subregional Subcommittee, but this was a little more detailed to the city of Santa Barbara, and I'm really glad Measure A gave you direct funding. I think that makes your budgeting very, much easier, not easy, but easier, so thank the voters for agreeing to do that.
We do, absolutely.
Mr. House, you had another question?
I remember constituent, I was trying to capture this, a constituent asked me a question the other day, so I might as well ask it of you. There was a concern about the, and this is very particular, but it had to do with the shuttle up State Street, and the, the thought that there would be a closure of a, of one of the, the bus stops, the one down sort of towards the, the beach on the east side of State Street. And it was a rumor floating around somehow that there was going to be some closure of some of those stops or something. Is there anything at all that you know of that's in the works on it, maybe with the La Entra project or any of that?
Councilmember House, what that is, it's not actually being closed, it's being relocated. So it's currently in front of the vacant lot on State Street, it's laid going up State Street. It's going to be relocated to the other side of the intersection in front of Hot Spots.
I see.
That's going to be done as part of the Encanto project.
I was, I know, I mean, I know that if you ride that loop, you, you can't hardly get on it in the summer on the one side of the street, because it's already full from people being wise enough to get on it on the other side.
Exactly.
So that, that circulation and that operational piece is something you're addressing?
Yes, and I would like to also say that our relationship with city staff when it comes to any of those kind of changes, and sometimes they're just a short-lived repair of something or another, but it's excellent. We, we get the information quickly, and I can't even remember a time when we haven't been able to jointly work out what needed to happen and get the customers informed, but then sometimes rumors circulate that are bigger than they are.
It's a little reassuring to hear that, given what she'd said. And then the fare box recovery thing, this is, I appreciate Mr. Hotchkiss bringing it up. Somewhere in this equation must be, like if it's 38 to 40% being recovered, and then the other has to come like a subsidy, we would call it, but how much would it cost us if we didn't have the bus? You know, that, it must cost at least, it would seem like it would cost the community at least a whole bunch of that money to provide for the maintenance and upkeep of the parking garages or the traffic impacts that would hold back. I mean, I just, where, where is that kind of thing discussed? Maybe CEC talks about it, or it's a, there's a cost there one way or another, right? And so it seems like we're subsidizing buses, and almost sounds like a handout. But I think there's, do you guys study that stuff, or does anybody that you know of look into that, so we can...
I'm betting, I'm betting we could jointly get you that information, probably from a TCRP report, they're generally available. And it's sort of a reminder also that everybody subsidizes streets and roads already, no offense to streets and roads, we all want them, including buses, but Dave's got a good idea here.
No, I was just going to say, it is discussed in your own circulation element. That's really where it's discussed because the modal split and the needs, the unmet transit needs that you have for low-income people. What Cherry didn't really get into is that the main focus of MTD is to provide transit for transit-dependent people. That's why the feds subsidize us. We're a heavily serviced community. That's why we have such high ridership. I mean, for those of you who ride the bus, it doesn't take long to know that you're looking at the service community which supports essentially the economy of Santa Barbara. So it is a, it is a subsidy. It does come back through the feds as well as the state. And what it does is provides transit for the transit dependent. That's the main goal. We try to branch out into choice riders and, you know, where necessary. And again, we always try to attract. But again, our main focus is we need to meet the needs of the transit dependent.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much for your attention.
Okay, we'll move on to item number nine.
Update on code of conduct for advisory group members and adoption of revised city advisory group guidelines. Recommendation that council adopt by reading a title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara. Approving the revised guidelines for the City of Santa Barbara advisory groups and rescinding resolution numbers 03-006 and 06-092.
Thank you. Mr. Casey?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. We're here to report back to you on the direction that you all gave us as city council from late September in dealing with code of conduct, abstentions, and other kind of ethic policy issues with our board and commissions. If you recall, back in September, you had a big hearing and a discussion about some action that occurred at our design review boards. And you came up with a number of items that you wanted staff to return to you with, and that's what we're here to do today. I can tell you, we've had a number of key staff working on this, including Mr. Armstrong and Mr. Wiley, myself, Gwen Pierce, the city clerk, Marcela Lopez has been involved, Jaime Limone with the design review boards, and Betty Wees is the city planner as well. So we've had a pretty comprehensive team looking at this in a comprehensive manner. And we bring back some recommendations for you today. Summary of the presentation, I'm going to lead off and talk about the council direction and some Brown Act training that we've already done for staff as well as presentations to advisory groups. I'll then turn it over to Ms. Pierce, who will talk about revisions we're making to the advisory group guidelines and also some new requirements we'd like to add as a city for AB 123, 1234 ethics training, which she'll go into a little bit more detail, that we'd like to, on a voluntary basis, have more advisory groups participate in than is required under state law. And then we'll wrap up with Mr. Wiley to talk in a little more detail about a new code of conduct section that we're recommending be added to the advisory group guidelines that gets into some real specific issues with regard to state law. And also talks about the issue of sole proprietor, people serving on our boards and commissions, being able to represent clients as well. That's been an area of contention that we've struggled with, how to deal with. And so we have some recommendations about how to address that and we'll spend some time talking about that at the end of the presentation. So the council direction, on September 25th, you asked us to go back and conduct some staff training to educate staff in greater detail about these areas, since they are present at these board and commission meetings and kind of empower them to be more knowledgeable and able to assist the boards and commissions when necessary. Mr. Wiley and I went and conducted training at board and commission meetings. I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail. You also asked that we focus on conflict of interest and code of conduct. And so that's where we tried to use the existing advisory group guidelines as kind of the mechanism to do that. And you asked us then to prepare a revised code of conduct, and I think that's where we've addressed that. So our staff response, again, did the staff training, presentation to advisory groups. We'll go into each one a little more detail now. First thing we did, we did some staff training on the Brown Act procedures. Used this room. Mr. Wiley and Ms. Pierce led that discussion and training with staff. It was provided all the staff liaisons and the support staff to the different boards and commissions. And again, this was broader. This wasn't just the design review boards. This includes what, we've got 36 boards and commissions around the city, but some are more active than others. And so this was the key staff liaisons and support staff to the more active boards and commissions in town. And essentially reinforced the best practices of Brown Act and proper meeting procedures and how to conduct meetings. So again, so that staff is better educated and knowledgeable to be of assistance to the board and commissions as those occurred. We then, at your request, went and began speaking to advisory groups about a number of these issues. Mr. Wiley and I did a little roadshow. So far, we've gone to the planning commission, the architectural board of review, the single-family design review board. We still have scheduled the historic landmarks commission later this month. Then we intend to follow up as well with like the airport commission and the harbor commission and a few other kind of key commissions as well. We hadn't quite finalized our approach and so it was more of a dialogue and conversation with the boards and commissions. We used the Institute of Local Government. They have a really good handout, the Ethics for Public Officials handout. And so Mr. Wiley kind of distributed those as kind of a reference material point. The Institute for Local Government is a local nonprofit that serves local government, I think essentially in California. But they do some really good analysis on kind of issues like this, good government-type issues. And so they have some good handouts that we were able to use. We discussed conflicts of interest, recusals, abstentions, kind of when are they appropriate, when are they not? Had a good dialogue. We also covered some additional Brown Act parameters. And then again, at the design review boards in particular, discussed the sole proprietor issues because that has a big issue and we'll get into it again later. But I believe almost close to half of our volunteers on our design review boards are sole proprietors. And so it really is an issue that has some consequence about how we deal with it and there is some state law and direction about how to deal with it. As I said, we've completed presentations to the planning commission, the architectural board of review, single-family design review board, and the historic landmarks commission is coming. And then we'll follow up with some additional boards and commissions as well. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Ms. Pierce. She'll talk a little bit about advisory group guidelines and the AB 1234 ethics training.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. The advisory group guidelines were originally adopted in 1995 and they're updated periodically reflect organizational and policy changes. Last time they were revised was in 2006. That's why this resolution is rescinding a resolution from 2006 because we do adopt these guidelines by resolution. So when you, if you look through the redline version that we submitted to you, you can see that most of the changes were kind of small, little minor changes and updates. What we're going to focus on today is considering the new AB 1234 ethics training requirements, a new code of conduct section, and an acknowledgement page that we're asking all the advisory group members to sign and return to the city clerk's office. And that would be given to the current advisory group members. And anybody who's appointed in the future would also be given the guidelines with this acknowledgement page. First, I'll be briefly discussing the new AB 1234 ethics training requirement that's found on page 19 of the guidelines. Assembly Bill 1234 was signed into law in October 2005 and it requires that any local appointed or elected officials who receive compensation of any kind must receive training in ethics. For the AB 1234 individuals, such as yourselves, as you know, you're required to receive the training about a year after you're elected and then every two years thereafter. The training encompasses both general ethics principles and a summary of specific laws concerning conflict of interest, rules and limitations on gifts and government transparency. So we're talking like the Brown Act, Public Records Act, and Political Reform Act. Currently, the only appointed group who's required to fulfill this requirement is the planning commission because they are the only ones who are receiving compensation at this time. At one time, the ABR, Historic Landmarks Commission, and Single Family Design Board members were also required to take this training. But when their compensation was suspended, while we encouraged them to continue the training, and some did, we weren't able to really require them to do it. Today's staff is recommending that we expand this ethics training requirement to other members of city advisory groups. We received input from all the department heads, our group that we talked to. And we asked all the department heads which groups they think should be considered to be ones who've been... And they, they gave us a list of the ones who have been identified are groups that involve making decisions that impact individuals or businesses' financial or real property interests. Or they're involved with approving leases or contracts or providing input on budgetary decisions. So we have the groups listed up there. They're also listed in the guidelines and in the council agenda report. The initial training requirement was specified that these members complete the training within six months of this resolution becoming effective. In the council agenda report, we recommended that the new members take online training through the Fair Political Practices Commission. But the city attorney and I have discussed that we would like to provide an ethics training probably around the same time as the council, as the annual commission workshop and orientation, so that members can come in and ask questions or receive a live training. They could also take the online training if they so choose, but we want to do that for this initial group since it's going to impact quite a few people. Then after that, any newly appointed members of these advisory groups or reappointed members would be required to take the training after their appointments or reappointments. Now I'm going to pass the presentation to Mr. Wiley to discuss the new code of conduct section.
Madam Mayor, actually, before I get into the new code of conduct, I did want to mention the Brown Act training again that was conducted in November, last November, and just emphasize that it was here in council chambers. It was two hours long. And my recollection is that council chambers was pretty much full. And it was city staff, particularly the staff members assigned to boards and commission to be the actual clerical person or to prepare their agendas. And one thing in particular about this training that was emphasized wasn't so much some of the more esoteric aspects of the Brown Acts, such as when you schedule a closed session or how you might violate the Brown Act, things like that, was really the agenda process, the properly agendizing public meetings so that the public knows what's on the agenda, what's going to be discussed, and has an opportunity to attend those meetings. And we see this as part of this overall picture of ethical conduct so that, you know, the Brown Act is sometimes called the open meeting law or the sunshine act. And it really is to make sure that everything we do is accessible to the public. Everything, every public meeting, every public decision is, at least if the public wishes to attend and participate, they have the ability to do that under the Brown Act. And so I wanted to mention that. The, as Gwen mentioned, we've had certain information, certain, if you will, code of conduct for board and commission members for some time, but we felt this was appropriate time to expand on it, in particular to deal with some of the issues we, some of the problem issues we've been having lately. For example, when is it appropriate to abstain or not abstain? And that's broader than the question of whether you have a conflict of interest under state law. And for example, it has become fairly common for board and commission members to abstain when they haven't participated in prior meetings. And I think one of the things we're recommending in these, this new code of conduct is that that should be the exception and not the rule, that a board and commission member should really, we should try to get as full participation as possible. If we've got a seven-member board, ideally, we would like all seven members to participate in a decision so that we don't have abstentions and we don't have people being absent. Because I think that makes, we think that makes for a better, more open process, more balanced process, if you will. So as I say, one of the things this new code of conduct says is that generally you should try to avoid abstaining merely because you don't feel you have the background and that you can participate in a decision if you feel that you've gone and obtained the background. And that, of course, is more easy nowadays because you can, the city, the city has video of these meetings, it's online streaming. You can go back. You can DVR a meeting. You can go back to the city website and review it. You can work with staff to see the plans and any reports that might be available. And as a board and commission member, bring yourself up to speed. The other thing that we wanted to really stress in this new code of conduct, and I think for some of us, we always felt this was fairly obvious and we, I think, assumed this, that, and that, that you would not let, as a board and commission members, your personal, what I call your personal slash slash political views interfere with your decisions or your deliberations as a board and commission members. But I think we've realized that we shouldn't just assume that. We should be very clear about that and very express about that. And, you know, to be honest, though, I see this as tricky because we all have personal political views. We're all human. And so we have certain biases. And I use the term biases in a, or predilections in a neutral way. We, you know, but at the same time, I think what our new code of conduct is saying to board and commission members is that you should think of yourself as a judge, just like a judge in the judicial system. And it's a rare judge that ever sits up at the bench and says, well, you know, this because of my views about this, or my views. I'm going to decide this case this way. Judges are, take an oath to decide a case in accordance with the law. And really, that's what our code of conduct is saying about city board and commission members, that you are, you volunteered in the first place and you're signing now this code of conduct. And essentially, we're understanding, we have an understanding with you that you're going to decide your city decisions, make your city decisions in accordance with the community concerns, the city concerns. And those are typically the concerns that are expressed in our charter, in our municipal code, in our regulations. And, you know, we've talked about in the past, this is especially critical with respect to design review or say, the planning commission or land use determinations because those can be very significant decisions for property owners. There's a lot of money typically involved, even if you're just a single-family homeowner and you're in front of a board and commission, city board and commission. In a relative sense, there's a lot of time and money involved for that homeowner to be in the process. And so what we're saying is that every applicant from the individual homeowner through a major developer really should be able to know that the only thing that will influence a decision is the proper community concerns. And the same is true for any member of the public that might participate in a city decision, that they know that even if they're not an applicant, or maybe they're a supporter of a project or they're an opponent of a project, or they would like to see a project changed in some way, that the only considerations that a city board will be considering are the ones that are expressed in, as I say, the charter, the municipal code, or in city regulations. That, as we see it, is a major aspect of this new code of conduct. Finally, we wanted to explain some things about design review boards that the state law, that essentially the state, the FPPC regulations explain. And I have to remind people on a regular basis that this is not something unique to the city of Santa Barbara. It's not something that we're writing, that we're making up, that we're imposing. These are imposed by state regulations, by the Fair Political Practices Commission, in how they define a potential conflict of interest in the context of a design review board. And/or it does come up in a connection with a planning commission because you often find design review professionals on a planning commission as well. And that has to do with what's called the technical documents exception. And it has to do with the sole proprietor exceptions. There are two distinct exceptions. But just to back up for a second, you know, it really is the design review boards and the design professionals that have this tough issue. You don't see this sort of thing with the library commission or the airport commission typically. They need to be concerned about their own potential conflicts with respect to their own financial interests. But in the case of design review professionals, they're, particularly in a community like Santa Barbara, they're out there practicing their profession, yet we're asking them to volunteer on these design review boards. And that by its nature implicates this, a potential conflict of interest. And so the FPPC has tried to, if you will, liberalize this a bit, the strict conflict rules, by creating these two exceptions. Technical documents says that if you're an architect or an engineer, such as a structural engineer, or I think the term they use, a professional in a related field, a design professional, not necessarily an architect, you can submit technical documents to your own board or commission. Now, again, we need to keep in mind that this only applies, that there's only an issue when a board or commission member wants to appear, wants to make a presentation before their own board. And the technical document says that you can prepare the documents and submit them. But, and you know, that submission can be over the counter at community development. And you can answer questions about those documents that particularly, for example, if the staff, city staff were to call you and say, you know, I didn't follow something on your structural drawings. Could you explain this to me? And you're able to respond to that. So as I say, the FPPC considers that not a conflict. You can submit documents, even though you know that those documents, let's say you're on the ABR and you're a member of the ABR and you're submitting documents that you know will eventually be reviewed by the ABR. That's allowed. And that has, that has nothing to do with whether you're a sole proprietor or not. Then the second exception has to do with sole proprietors. And I think I've mentioned in the past that this was actually an exception that Santa Barbara brought to the attention of the FPPC, the city attorney's office, in the mid-'80s. And we posed the problem to the FPPC that in a community our size in particular, where there's only so many architects and we have a lot of design review, how do you, how do you, is there a way you can allow some flexibility for a sole proprietor? And again, sole proprietor means they don't have partners. They don't have a design employee, someone who may be gaining the experience required to be a certified architect. someone who may be gaining the experience required to be a certified architect. They're, they're just a sole proprietor, they're working by themselves, for themselves, while they may have clerical staff, that's not what we're talking about here. Sole proprietors can make presentations to their own board. Again, they don't have a problem making presentation to other boards. An ABR member can make a presentation to the SFB. An ABR member can make a presentation to the planning commission. But an ABR member needs to be careful in making a presentation to their own board, to the ABR. And, but the FPPC does allow it if you're a sole proprietor, and it does use that term, you can present your documents. You can't try to influence the city decision. And that's tough, and I'm not sure the FPPC has provided us with tremendous amount of guidance of the difference between making a presentation and advocating for your client's project. And, you know, when we, we conducted some of the training at the ABR and SFB, I tried to explain that, for example, if you're responding to questions, I don't think you can be accused of advocating for your project, your client, you're simply responding to a question. So, that sort of thing, that sort of presentation is allowed. Focusing on the documents and explaining the documents is allowed, I think that's presentation. Just to give you an example, what I think crosses the line from beyond presentation to advocacy would be to pick up the phone and to call a city staff member who you know happens, let's say you're an ABR member and you call an ABR staffer. That's, that's an affirmative contact that you initiated as an ABR member to a staff member, and I think that's going to cause some trouble if it, you know, at the FPPC, or it's going to cause them to think possibly that's a violation. Now, the converse isn't necessarily true. If a staff member calls you and says, I have a question, I'd like you to answer, I think, again, that's the sort of presentation that this exception allows.
Mr. Hatch just had a question.
Just to clarify and state the obvious, obviously, you're not going to end up voting on these things, you'd recuse yourself from that.
Oh, clearly, yes. I, and I'm glad you asked that, because one of the things that we make clear here as well, again, is the process, the proper process for stepping down. So if you're an ABR member and you've got a client in front of ABR, one of the first things you have to do is say, Mr. Chair, I need to recuse myself, I'm stepping down. And in accordance with the law, you've got to give the reason why you're stepping down. You've got to explain that and leave the room, except in this case of the sole proprietor who can make their own presentation to their own board.
Right, so you're not only recusing yourself, you're not around for the debate about the project, but you can't answer the questions so that the people who are considering it better understand the project.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And finally, as Gwen mentioned, it is, it is significant, in my opinion, that we are extending the AB 1234 training requirement to a lot of board and commission members. We, we think that's a good idea. Be honest with you, the state law only requires it to be two hours long, and it's supposed to cover the Brown Act, the Public Records Act, the Conflict, the Political Reform Act of 1974, you know, a whole host of very complicated state statutes, all in two hours. It's, we think this is a good idea. It's not, and it's not that necessarily the board and commission members are going to come out of this two-hour training and be experts in all these things. But hopefully, they'll know enough to spot an issue, to realize, oh, there's a question there, and possibly I ought to ask a staff member, or even consult with the city attorney's office, and get, you know, some help in getting to the bottom of the question. And so Gwen mentioned that the FPPC offers online training, I think there's some law firms that offer free seminars, and we're more than willing, you know, on a fairly regular basis, to offer the two-hour training as well. Because this is not required by state law, I'm not sure it's going to be identical to the state training and be as interactive as the online training might be. But I think it might even be better in the sense that it will be interactive, that there'll be questions and answers back and forth. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a public comment speaker. Why don't we do that and then come to questions and final comments from us? Mr. Suting. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, council members, Mayor. I'm here as a member of the HLC, but my views don't necessarily represent every commissioner. I know that the code of conduct and conflict of interest is an important issue to tackle. I'm not going to tell you exactly how to do that. What I want to request is that you be sensitive to the time commitment that is asked or even required of the various boards and commissions. Just recently, by an unfortunate turn of events, ABR has been left without a landscape design professional. Staff has to call on the other landscape design professionals from the other board or commission, and that involves a lot of time. The code of, excuse me, the code of conduct and conflict of interest training can take anywhere from two to four hours, I guess, depending on how ethical the training is to begin with. Please just be sensitive and respectful to the time commitment all your appointees have already. Just be aware of the ramifications piling on more time responsibilities we'll have on your pool of applicants.
Thank you, and thank you for your service on the HLC. Okay, it's to the council. Ms. Murio.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and thank you all for the presentation today. Aside from Mr. Suting's statement, Mr. Wiley, or I'm sorry, Mr. Casey, have you had feedback from other advisory board members about what you've been telling them? Are people embracing it?
Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Murio, we haven't had a lot of feedback from the written advisory group guidelines which came out on Thursday. I've had one comment from a planning commissioner asking a few clarifying questions in that regard. When we go and speak to the design review boards, you know, we spoke to them before we had put this package together, and so we had a lot of dialogue about, again, I think their biggest angst was around the sole proprietor issue and what that means. I, I think they kind of got the guidance on when to abstain and step down and how to do that, and they kind of appreciate the refresher course on that. And I think it'll be good for us to do that periodically, either through the online training or through the in-person training. And I think they appreciate that. I think, as Mr. Suting says, they're all volunteers and they want to do a good job, and they're here because they care about the community, and so they want to do the right thing. And so I think they're trying to understand what is the right thing, and could we be giving them some guidance about what the right thing is? So I think they appreciated the conversation in that regard. I think there's still a lot of angst, and Mr. Lamone can talk about that if he wants, on the sole proprietor issue, because it's their livelihood as well as them wanting to volunteer, and so not wanting to get caught up in the middle of that and do the right thing. And so I think that these written guidelines, giving them a little more clarification and guidance, and also, like Mr. Wiley said, just elevating the issues, so if they get close to something, they know to ask the question or look out for more information, I think is helpful.
We lost a couple of sole proprietors, didn't we, who were serving? What were the circumstances around that?
I forget exactly, and Mr. Lamone might be able to fill in as well. One, I think their term was coming up close to being completed, and so they just kind of felt maybe it was, is time to step down. Again, there was not as much clarity as I think we're trying to provide in these guidelines about what the issues are and how to deal with them. So I don't know, Jaime, if you have anything else?
Madam Mayor, Council Murio, we did have some feedback originally with respect to their concern that if they could not make presentations, they would not feel compelled to be a volunteer. We had actually a couple of them suggest they were going to resign. And we actually calmed them down a little bit and said, we are still developing these guidelines. And from the initial feedback and direction that we've given on our current position, I think they're pretty satisfied that we'll be able to not only allow them to continue their profession bit, also announce as part of the process to the public that there is this allowance to make your own presentation. I think that was the concern they had, that somehow they were violating some requirements.
And Madam Mayor, if I could follow up on that, I think that's a real key thing. It's the last paragraph on page 26 that we want to do is, if there is a member of a design review board who's going to present as a sole proprietor, we'd like the chair to read a brief statement that says that that's what they're doing under the provisions of state law, and maybe even attach a more thorough understanding of that to the agenda itself, so that there's greater transparency. I think there's a recognition that there's a frustration if you're a member of the public, you're sitting in the audience, and maybe you're here and you have some concerns about the project, and you see a board member just kind of come around and start presenting, and it doesn't feel right, and it doesn't look right. And so I think it makes them, as a committed person in the community coming and talk, not feel right. I think it makes the design professional who's coming around and can kind of feel that hostility behind them not feel good as well. And so we kind of like the idea of greater transparency, of reading a statement when that happens, so that everyone in the room and watching on TV can kind of understand the parameters of what's happening and why.
My final question is, why we have trouble recruiting landscape architects for boards and committees? Are there so few of them, or are you just going to give me your opinion, which is fine?
Councilwoman Murio, it is really a combination of just the expansion of design review boards throughout the county. We have now competition with the city of Galita, county Montecito, and we've actually increased the number of boards to, when we created the single-family design board. And yes, we are running out of landscape architects that fill the area, and we are actively recruiting always, but I think these guidelines will, again, clear up this confusion about sole proprietors, and we're hoping to have some more candidates this year.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I just, something that Mr. Casey said reminded me of something I was going to mention. Mr. Campanella, the planning commissioner, did send us an email last Friday with a question about these, and I think it occurred to us that we, it was a good point and possibly we should clarify. And that has to do with these at times refer to the applicant. Do you have a conflict of interest with respect to the applicant? And Mr. Campanella's point was, well, doesn't it, isn't it more than just the applicant? It could be a member of the applicant's team, and that's a good clarification to make, and that we may, at some point in here, clarify that when we're referring to the applicant, it's any member of the applicant's team.
Thank you. Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that last point is a good one. I think it's very important that the chairman of whatever board is involved makes that announcement of how the sole proprietor exception works and why that's important, so that the public realizes when they see this happening, it can look like collusion. And the simple reality is, as Mr. Wiley said, in a town this size with a limited applicant pool, there's really no way around it. If we want to have people serving on these design review boards and perform that important function, we have to have a way for the sole proprietors to continue to make a livelihood as well as volunteer their time. So I think formalizing that is a great idea. That will solve a lot of problems in advance. I wanted to make one suggestion, and I, actually, I spoke with Mr. Wiley about this earlier today. On page 25, section three, number three at the top of the page, in the third and final paragraph of that section, the sentence that begins, "The city believes that advisory board members should generally not abstain or refuse to consider a city application based on their personal or political beliefs." And I would like to suggest that we strike the word generally as, I can't imagine any circumstance under which a board member would allow their personal or political beliefs to interfere with the decision of the design review board.
And Madam Mayor, as Councilmember Francisco mentioned, he spoke to me about that, and actually, that's, that's just my mistake. I qualify things as a lawyer probably too much. So, that qualification of the word generally is...
You generally qualify things? Yeah. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Mr. House.
Okay, good. First of all, I think that the general idea of what we're doing is great. I mean, from somebody who's served on the planning commission and has worked with those, with many that have been in these roles, knowing what the rules are is a really important thing. And if you're, if you're not sure, you find yourself in awkward positions where you're trying to use just common sense, which could work for you and could work against you. So the clearer the rules are, the better, I think, for everyone, and I'm glad we're doing this. It also conveys a sense of confidence to the public and to the applicants that are coming forward, that they're being treated in an impartial way. So, that said, as I looked through this, there was, there were just a couple of questions I had, one of them sort of, kind of technical, I guess, on page 15, where it talks about compensation. And Mr. Wiley, it's, when we talk about, often in our, in our policies and guidelines, we talk about procedure, excuse me, we talk about fees or things like that, we usually have the actual fee or the actual financial or dollar and cent piece in an enabling ordinance somewhere else, sort of. In other words, this would, compensation would say that some of our, of our review boards and commissions or whatever are compensated, but then the actual details of how, who's compensated exactly how much would seem to be in some other place. And I just wondered, it seemed, it was, I was just a little surprised that it showed up in, in the policy language, the specific amounts of the compensation. Is there another place where that, the details of who's compensated how much could go, and where the policy would just be the general policy that some of our, some of our groups are compensated? And maybe even identify, I don't know if we'd identify which ones? Yeah, by some authorization? Usually it's by the authorization of council or something, we refer to those kinds of things.
Mr. House, actually, probably not the best person to answer that question, maybe the city...
I know during the budget, don't we, we adopt the fee resolution that includes all sorts of fees. Are these fees in there?
It's not like a fee, it's sort of a compensation, but...
Not fee, but that's right, but that's true.
Same idea.
It's a budget item.
We can generalize it, I mean, it certainly, it can be, it can be more general, if that's council instruction.
We generally compensate when...
Because, Madam Mayor, you're right that the compensation decision is a budget decision, and since they're mostly design review boards, they've occurred as part of the community development department's budget. I think it's not a bad idea to have the concept in here and then allow the monetary amount to be set as part of our annual budget process, because maybe you can reinstate at a $30 per meeting, and you'd like to do that as a token of your appreciation as opposed to the $50, then we don't have to keep amending the guidelines if we do something different.
That's sort of where I was going with that comment, and if we would do that, I think it'd probably be better form. And I appreciate the suggestion, Mr. Francisco. On the exhibit A, which is at the very end, just a couple of things. One, I see the idea that this would be read if there were a situation where someone was coming forward and, and presenting their own project, a project where they're going to their own board. So if that's so, and some, I can imagine the chair reading this, when I get to the second paragraph, the language is a little harsh, and it's only because of the use of the word is in two of the sentences, and I'll share with you what I, I mean. "When a governmental decision is being made by the same board to which a local public official has been appointed, the official is attempting to use his or her official position to influence the decision of their own board." Maybe it's like, maybe, or something, or, you know, give them a benefit of a doubt. I mean, it's almost an accusation there, and it sort of shows up in the last sentence, where we have the word generally, kind of interesting. "Generally, such an official is also attempting to use his or her official position to influence the decision if he or she appears before his or her own board." That may be an identity statement, but it reads a little bit as an accusation of the person who's right there in front of the chair, in front of the group, when in fact, they may be there just literally presenting their fore-decision in a very fair and honest way. We'd hope it would be true. So perhaps we can find, I would suggest, a little softer language, maybe, or attempting to, or could be seen to, just like when we recuse ourselves, it's not because we, there's a conflict of interest, it could be seen as a conflict of interest. And that's the language we often use as we're recusing ourselves. And so I don't want to wordsmith it, but that particular, that worried me a little bit about how that would feel if I were an applicant coming forward and I felt like I was being accused already of trying to unduly influence the board when I'm just really presenting my project. And then the second piece on that is on the A, B, C, and D, and I called Mr. Wiley about this, it appears that these are four, I think, Mr. Wiley, each of these doesn't stand on its own, it's, all of these conditions would have to be met in order for the limited circumstances to apply, I mean, for the exception to apply. Perhaps you could speak to that and help us clarify, because I couldn't tell which way it was. Was it just one of these, or would it be all four had to combine?
Councilmember House, it is all four, and I have to sort of explain, I initially resisted drafting this for the reason that I am not absolutely comfortable in paraphrasing FPPC regulations, because I don't get to change the FPPC regulations. And there, it, the penalties and the consequences can be fairly harsh, and as we know, we've seen it happen in Santa Barbara. If you get in trouble with the FPPC and they feel you've done something wrong, it's very public, fines are involved. So I don't want to mislead someone by paraphrasing a legal requirement and not getting it right. And I actually... And I actually did not, consciously did not paraphrase anything. I lifted language right out of the regulations and summarized and tried to boil down. So, I have to say that second paragraph is pretty much right out of the regulations, and it is, it does mean what it says, that you really are not supposed to be in front of your own board. And the only time you can be is when you're a sole proprietor. And it's not, it's not, well, there might be some times when you could kind of do it, it depends on what you say. No. The only time you can do it is when you're a sole proprietor and you're only making a presentation on your own drawings. Now, otherwise, it's a violation of the FPPC regulations. But to your second question, it possibly would be clear. It does say, "If the following limited circumstances apply." If we said, "If all of the following limited circumstances apply." So, it would be all four, just to be clear about that.
I see. And so, we're expecting the chair to read the entire page?
Yes, I think that's a good idea. That's at least my recommendation. And I know it'll take a few minutes to do that, but I'm told that it's not that, actually that common, that you have somebody making presentations to their own board.
I see. So that would put the person who is about to make a presentation on notice at that moment, that they need to be staying within these particular, specific guidelines and not stray even a little tiny bit?
Well, I like to think it'll remind them, but it'll also be very, something very public, that members of the public will, okay, this, these are the circumstances under which he or she can be doing this, and that they're limited circumstances. And, you know, incidentally, when we review this and the FPPC regulations and their opinion letters, they always talk about how narrow these exceptions are, how limited these exceptions are. And it's important to communicate that to people.
So you're saying the second paragraph is actually lifted directly from the language that's in the FPPC-
Yes.
...requirements or guidelines or something?
Yeah.
Maybe we would identify that as such then, so that the language is really, it's actually clearly, instead of us being seen to paraphrase, we're actually saying, "Regulation such and such so says that." And then that would, to me, put that proper distance.
We can annotate this with the FPPC-
Okay. So that clarifies those things for me, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much.
Mr. Francisco, did you have another question?
I just wanted to comment on that quickly. That, the particular sentence that you're referring to there, "When a governmental decision is being made by the same board to which a local public official has been appointed, the official is attempting to use his or her official position to influence the decision of their own board if the official contacts other board members or city employees in order to discuss the possible decision and does so in a manner which appears to be an attempt to influence the decision." So that's really, that's not casting aspersions, that's a definition. That's letting people know exactly, if you do this, doesn't matter, you know, what your intentions are, if you do this, you are in violation.
Madam Mayor, it's very clear, and I'm glad for this part of the conversation. Helps me understand it better.
Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, you know, having sat on committees myself for quite a while, I'm mindful of Mr. Suting's concerns about the time commitment and what goes on with volunteers. However, these types of things actually protect volunteers and individuals, protects their careers, their reputations, all of that's at stake. And I think this due diligence, extra care is really something that I think has been a little bit missing in the past, and I really think it's a valuable enhancement, not only for those individuals that volunteer and participate, but the public perception that there's a level playing field, that everybody's got the same shake going forward in front of these, especially the design review committees, is essential for us going forward. So, I'm very pleased with what staff has come up with so far. I had a question, and maybe Ms. Pierce would answer this, but as I, as I thought about people coming forward to apply for these positions, and right now, this training is available to you once you are appointed and engaged, and you have to be within a year of when you start, without it being the two-hour training session on the computer, is there something, maybe even some kind of a general cheat sheet or something that somebody could go through and analyze if they are in fact somebody that would want to participate in this before they get into the application process?
Well, we could certainly look into something like that. We are also talking about videotaping the training, so they could watch it and see if they really want to be a part of it. That might be, and we could post it online on the, on the Board of Commission pages. They can watch it themselves and see if they think they want to be a part of that.
Yeah, because I've actually, you know, personally interviewed a number of people that wanted to be on design review boards and asked me about that, but their intention was to, yeah, this would be really good for my business. I go, "That's not what we're supposed to be doing here." And unfortunately, the public perception follows that on some level, and I think we need to do what we can to bring it back to where it's supposed to be.
And Madam Mayor and Councilmember Rouse, we think this 27-page document is a really good reference tool that people should read before applying as well. That as you really go through it, it is a lot of good common sense about how we expect people to act and behave as volunteers and hope they do so. And that's kind of one of the reasons of adding the signature page. I think that came out of your council dialogue back in September, is just kind of acknowledging that you've read this and that you've taken the time to look it over.
But at one point in the process, would you get that-
Application? Don't they sign something in the application?
There is the Code of Conduct of, you know, Customer Service Excellence and Customer Service that they do sign as part of the application. Also, this, these guidelines are posted on the website on the same page as our applications. So, as Mr. Casey said, it would be, it would behoove people to look through it at least before they apply. But yes, they will still be required to sign the other Code of Conduct, Excellence and Customer Service Code of Conduct as well.
Thank you.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I also want to second the comments that have been made, thanking staff for this and appreciating that, if I can, join Mr. House and appreciating the effort here. As I was thinking about it, I went back to starting out on Water Commission, helping, working with this, as a commission member. And in those days, and then thinking about what, why are we here? And the, obviously, there was this train wreck around the Chick-fil-A incident. And we got there, the city got there, partly, I think, because we didn't, we didn't have the same guidance that we on Planning Commission and on city council get of having that, the clique in our background the whole time, where what we're doing, when we kind of get, wander a little bit, we get brought back by an attorney, one of our attorneys, who's trying to keep the city's process clean and, by the way, help the decision makers stay on a certain course. And the other, we can't have attorneys at however many boards and commissions we have, we just can't do that. So this is sort of a substitute process that's going on here to try and have proxy attorneys really helping people frame their work around, around what is expected of them by, on a legal basis. And that's a real challenge, and I appreciate our staff and our attorneys trying to bring this forward. And I think this is a successful effort to upgrade that. And there will be these sort of cycles of reminders, is what you're really bringing forward here, is ways to, this, we can go through this effort, and then in a year or two or three, our people, our successors will not have these electroshock incidents to remind us of how important this stuff really is. So, it's going to be a reiterative process, and I think that what you've, I also appreciated the comments about, about having, for example, a bit of this videotape, something, these relatively easy things, but things that will be reminders going forward. So I like that idea of yet another, you know, using our resources that we have to put something together, and it might be yet one more thing that someone could do, an applicant could do, in relatively short time to be brought up to speed. So, again, I just, I really do appreciate. And then finally, the public perception. We, it's critical, obviously, that each decision maker be, be clean and be, and be on track, but, and one of the, and the most, perhaps, one of the certainly underpinnings of this is that the public perception of this process is one that's respectful and appreciative of the genuine hard work and earnest efforts that our, what, 100, 150 folks that do this work are putting forth each day for our city. So, thank you for your efforts. I think it's a good, a very good step.
Mr. Hachakis?
I'll be quick, Madam Mayor, as usual. I understand Mr. House's worry about the strong language, but really appreciate the city attorney's clarification that we really want to have a line in the sand. And if I were listening to that, I would gulp, which I think is what we want. So, I'd like to go forward with that. I had a quick question, however. On page 18, we list a bunch of committees whose members are quote-unquote "filers," and then on page 19, it's not the same list. Could somebody explain to me what the difference is there?
Well, the lists, on the list on page 18, those are filers for Form 700, the Statement of Economic Interest.
Okay.
And then, on page 19, those are the individuals we've identified who would be doing this AB 1234 Ethics Training. So, there, it's, it's a little bit, I think the individuals who were identified for the AB 1234, they were, they were identified for direct conflict of interest, potential conflict of interest situations, and, you know, they, they impact real property interests, financial interests, that kind of thing. The people who file the Form 700, it's a little bit broader of a category.
Okay, well, for instance, CDHSC could very well qualify under AB 11234 Ethics Training, it seems to me, because they are making, God, they're dealing with almost a million bucks.
That's, you know, we brought this to council, and it's, if council decides that they want to add more names to that list, we're certainly open to that.
I would suggest at least that one, and maybe we'll look at others. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I would agree with Mr. Hachakis on CDBG, because sitting in, a lot of those members may be a member of the board of a nonprofit that's coming for a grant, and they know that they need to recuse themselves for that presentation, so it couldn't, it couldn't hurt, you know, and, because, yeah, it's quite a bit of money that they're-
I agree. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah. I also want to acknowledge the many volunteers who take their time in doing the great work that they do, because it certainly make our lives a lot easier, it makes the planning process better. And I think this process, I really appreciate also, because it highlights really the significant decisions these boards and commissions are making on people's lives. I mean, you're talking about someone's home design and their planning, and, I mean, this is, this, for a lot of people, this is their biggest asset that they have, and, you know, they have, there's a lot of attention, and rightly so, made towards those projects, and, you know, just the whole view of Santa Barbara and its planning. So, it's an important thing, and I think we need to take it seriously, and I, I'm actually, I wonder if other cities have it to this extent, and would suggest perhaps just sending it up to the League of Cities as a, you know, document to share, because I'm sure other communities are, have similar situations, we're not alone in having a design review process, and I think it's very well done. I, did I hear correctly that the application form, I know it has a sign about code, it's the code, are we adding this, or is it already there that they sign on when they apply, that they will be, that they have read and will agree to abide by this document if appointed?
Well, the Code of Conduct that they currently sign when they apply is the Excellence and Customer Service Code of Conduct-
Correct.
-that's been in place, and they do sign an acknowledgement of that. Once they would be appointed, then they would sign the acknowledgement form for the entire guidelines.
Okay. Okay. It may be worth putting on the application form acknowledgement that this also exists. I mean, I think, you know, that, that presentation, especially if you're a sole proprietor, and what does that mean? You don't want to get through a whole process and be interviewed, be appointed, and then find out, oh, I'm not allowed to do this, and that wastes everyone's time, and, you know, so I think that knowledge ahead of time is helpful. I like hearing that we're putting, having City TV putting some video together, I'm hoping that's going to be on the website, anyone could watch it at any time. If there is a summarized version, I would hesitate to call it an ethics cheat sheet, that would probably not be the best term for it, but a summary might work, just a suggestion. So, you know, I'm just listening to what you have to say. But no, really, thank you for this work, and I think it acknowledges the importance of the work that we do and our volunteers do, and acknowledges that we need to do what we can to make sure everyone does their job as best, to the best of their abilities. So, I appreciate this very much. Ms. Mario, and then Mr. House.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm prepared to support the guidelines, and I was going to say something related to summaries or shortening the process. I think it should be long and in-depth. For anyone who's taken those ethics trainings online, you sit there, it is a little torturous, but they give you examples. Your brother-in-law runs a construction company, and he wants a contract with the city. Do you help him get the contract? Well, no. And there's surplus office supplies. Do you take them home? I mean, it's, it's torturous and obvious, maybe, to some of us who have ethics, but it's, I think people need to go through that step-by-step thinking process. And it's amazing how a Brown Act training can be two hours long, and I've sat through them, but it's really an incredible law that protects everyone, and so, I think if people are going to serve on advisory boards and committees, they need to go through that arduous process. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. House?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. It is a great civics lesson when you do that, and you learn a lot. And I mean, and there are some of the things that, you know, your common sense kind of leads you in one way, and then you look at what the law says, and you've just learned something. There's a great booklet published by the League of Cities here in California that I've used, and I really appreciate it. It's on my desk, and I've referred to it from time to time. So I don't know what publications are that we might make available, or even make just a reading list if they want to, you know, get them themselves, that would be possible. Anyway, I move that the council adopt, by reading of title only, this resolution that we have before us, including the edits to page 15, having to do with compensation that we discussed on page 25, removing the word "generally," and on page 19, adding Community Development and Human Services Commission to that, to the list.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. Do we want to take a very short break, or?
I'm going to take a little short break.
Yeah, okay. Well, I want to take about a five-minute break or so. Thanks.
Fiscal year 2013 mid-year review.
Thank you, Mr. Samario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Bob Samario, Finance Director, here to present the mid-year financial review. I want to remind the council that we come to you every three months to give you a sort of a sense of how our revenues and expenditures are doing. The first quarter, really not a lot to report, because it's so early in the process, but the mid-year is really when we have the first chance to kind of look at the numbers and get a sense of what's going to be happening for the rest of the year. But for the most part, what department staff are looking for, and finance staff as well, is anything that kind of catches our attention that we need to alert you about as to, we might need to make an adjustment, or we're going to recommend an adjustment. But typically, we'll see something, and we'll say, you know what, let's wait till the third quarter, even into the year, before we make any recommendations. Having said that, as you, as you know, you might have seen the attachment, we have a number of proposed adjustments, which is really unusual for us to have that many in a mid-year process, but most of them, I'll tell you, are just technical cleanup, nothing in there of substance that you should be concerned about. And as Mr. Francisco said earlier, we've gone over these with the Finance Committee pretty thoroughly, so, and they are comfortable with those, so I'm not planning on going over those. But-